And would you join me in the platitudes?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, I'll open this session at nine forty-seven. First thing on the agenda is make the health services contracts fast Lake Health District for possible action or discussion. Commissioner Leonard, you didn't leave on that?
Well, I believe if we get to the decision side of this, which I prefer we will, this is a monumental day for Lake County and for the Lake District Hospital, Lake Health District. The Board of Commissioners went out for an RFP for the operations of mental health within Lake County. We had to respond. Recommendation from our advisory committee was to pursue and move forward with a contract with Lake District Hospital. I can't compliment Jay, our attorney, Denise, Board of Commissioners, everybody that's worked on this contract so hard. We're at the moment here today to know to possibly approve this. It's been quite right. The positive thing about this is this is such a great partnership between the hospital and the county and for our community, and we'll have services that I believe will come to another level. We've had good services in Lake County to this point, but this will have an opportunity to bring it to another level. So with that, Jay, do you want to go over anything on the proposed contract?
Well, I think you have those contracts. I think we've talked about any issues you have. Is there anything specifically you'd like to address?
Within the motion, I have prepared motion when we get to that part. I guess within the contract, as the public is here, that within the contract, there will be a reserve set aside, or if there is a cause, if the county was to take back over the operations of mental health, there will be, within a year, there will be $200,000 set aside. That's been talked about between both parties. This would be a five-year with an automatic ten-year, so in essence, this is a 15-year contract, which gives the stability to the hospital to grow mental health services within Lake County in some very positive ways. There's potential for them to be able to go as far as to have residential care and several different other things. Within the contract, it talks about the building that the county owns. That will be leased to them for an annual fee of $1 per year. And with that, we will be finalizing that lease. It's a very simple lease, a very short date from here, then at our regular board meeting. Commissioner Kestner, anything else in the contract that we?
Well, if that's in the contract, we've gone over it for the time being, until around three o'clock.
We have, and I think Brad mentioned most of the critical things there. We've got all our bases covered. We also have a reserve set aside for a potential liability of Lutheran family services, $50,000. And then I think the only other part I would mention is there'll be two phases to this contract, a management phase and an operations phase. The district will be licensed by Monday, according to the state, but it will be a temporary license, and so until they get their permanent license in place, we will operate under the management portion of this contract. Once they get that, the program will be essentially turned over to them in full and will enter the operation phase of that contract. I'm just so confident that this contract and this partnership with the hospital is going to improve the quality of services here in Lake County, not just the quantity, but the quality, but the quantity also. There's a lot of services that we haven't been providing that I think we're going to see in the future.
They would have, how I have to, the emphasis on the advisory committee when they recommended the Lake Health District versus cemetery care, cemetery care has to prove the program, they got lots of experience, but their reason for going with a local entity is because, one, it's local, we have more interaction potential, but also it provides good integration of mental health and physical health in the same arena.
So I think we've got a great contract here. We feel like it's mutually, it's a good contract for both us and the Health District. Our attorney has just a couple of things that he wanted to review today. We've been moving this along with a sense of urgency, but he just needs a little bit of time to review. Section 2.2, the hospital made a change there that he wants some time to consider and discuss with their attorney. And then we've got to calculate that final dollar amount that we're going to be transferring to the hospital.
Although reflected within my motion. Just a couple more quick comments before I make the motion, Commissioner. We couldn't be here today where we're at without employees over there at Lake County Mental Health. We have a core group of employees that stayed with us through this transition period. We've been transparent with them. We've continued to make them as whole as we can. Lake District Hospital has very much followed that same lead. They are trying to keep everybody as whole as they can when you transfer from county to the district. That's a huge thing for the employees. There's been lots of ups and downs for them. Can't thank them enough and everybody else that's worked on this, and Kimberly, our interim director, and Chris O'Wine, which is our site manager. Also, I just didn't want to miss saying happy for him, making the motion, Commissioner. So with that said, I would make a motion to approve the contract, management slash operational contract between Lake County and Lake District Hospital contingent upon legal counsel's review of changes proposed by the LHD to section 2.2, a careful line-by-line comparison of the final agreement document to the red line, the red line version that we agreed to, Jay's final determination, the total mental health dollars described in section 3.3c. With that, I would also make a statement of great support going this way, Commissioner.
Second motion, called discussions. Those last three items, Commissioner Leonard, are just non-nature significant in the contract to tweak a few little bits. It doesn't affect your overall judgment.
Yeah, to his business.
Just got a text from Jamie, he's on the phone right now with the Health District's attorney.
Perfect.
Any other discussing, anything for the audience? Hello? All in favor?
I am.
Hi. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and everybody else.
Thanks.
That concludes that part. The next part of our region today is cover caring slash Red Rock urban growth boundary adjustment. It's scheduled to about 10:00. We have about five minutes. If we reset, if somebody needs to take a walk, get some fresh water, 10:00 we will read the meeting.
How you doing?
Good.
I'm worried about that. A bunch of that stuff moved up on my street.
I should go wait for some.
Does anybody want to copy the documents?
Hi. Is this, is this one of them?
This is probably this.
This is probably.
Right now, we'll reset for another three, four minutes time.
Welcome to AT&amp;T's teleconference service. Please enter your access code, followed by the pound sign. To join the conference as the host, press star, otherwise, please enter your host password, followed by the pound sign. There are one participants on the call, including you. You're joining your conference as the host. For a menu of available commands, press star pound.
About third member?
Yeah.
I don't know why.
Well, it's.
Right now, we'll reset for another three, four minutes time.
Welcome to AT&amp;T's teleconference service. Please enter your access code, followed by the pound sign. To join the conference as the host, press star, otherwise, please enter your host password, followed by the pound sign. There are one participants on the call, including you. You're joining your conference as the host. For a menu of available commands, press star pound.
About third member?
I don't know why.
Well, it's.
I would.
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 I have.
I have.
It was after I left last night.
Good morning, Brad.
Every day is a good day. Every day is a good day.
Well, I just found that handed this.
Okay.
Morning, Mike. All right today? Doing all right today?
Amy, yeah, so I did.
I'm all over it.
How dare you doubt me?
I shouldn't have given you first.
How dare you doubt me?
Oh, I retire against people.
But no, I'm just kind of bored.
Raymond, how are you today? Good, you? It's a good day.
Enjoying this stuff. Well, yeah, been having a lot of fun. This is how they do all day, you know.
Need a kid, I can't hurt him.
You know, yeah. Yeah.
Come on.
At three minutes after 10, I'll reconvene the meeting, and the subject that's for us
is the urban growth boundary. I'd like for all discussion to be. I'll just open mine up. I'm here.
Now, Lakeview, now open the continuance of the hearing, urban growth boundary.
The purpose of this meeting is the second hearing on the urban growth boundary. Darwin, would you like to outline the procedure? Is it Jim Bailey? Welcome, Jim. We're just beginning our urban growth boundary hearing. Is there anyone else on the phone? We not?
Hi, this is Seth King. I'm an attorney at Perkins Coie. I'm working with Red Rock Biofuels.
Okay, welcome. Being on that everything that'd be said here would be made a full part of the record for the county as, for the town.
Commissioner, can you make sure that you've got the full roll call? Because the conference call said there were three participants.
Do we have somebody else on the line?
Okay, now I guess it's just the board, wherever it's in the room, Seth and myself, those are the three, I guess.
It appears to be so.
The stating that the complete record of the town and county joint planning commission hearings is made a part of the town record of this hearing, including all testimony, town planning permission minutes, recordings and recommendations, and the town's legislative comprehensive plan.
Yes, it will be with the county also, without we stating. Do we have any? But first, Darwin, can you give a little brief?
Yeah, give you a quick overview. Again, thanks to all that are in attendance today and that have been with us throughout this process, which the application was made by Red Rock Biofuels back in December of 15 for the urban growth boundary adjustment with zone change and comprehensive plan changes to what is referred to as the inclusion and exclusion areas. You recall that in January of 15, they were approved for a biofuels facility on the inclusion property, and as such, that project is able to be built according to the conditions that were in that finding decision. But Red Rock has proposed this urban growth boundary adjustment so that they can get into urban growth boundary and then eventually into the town to be managed to receive water and sewer services. We met on the 14th, this body, these two bodies, the town council and Board of Commissioners, to review recommendations by both the town and the county's planning commissions, which is part of the record as a staff form recommendation, which goes over those items that we've discussed. On the town side, there's also an adjustment to the allowed uses in the industrial park as well, so overlay zone. So I think that's a decent summary of where we're at. If people like more, I can certainly give it, but since we last met, there have been a couple of items that have been submitted. I just wanted to know in order that they were received. The Crag Law Center, their attorney, who was representing Mr. Robert Waits, John Williams, and the Northwest Environmental Defense Center have, their attorney, Mira, has submitted a letter, a four-page letter, which is part of the record, and it's something that applicant has a copy of, and certainly they'll give just money later in the absence of that letter. Sarah Button also came in the office yesterday and submitted a one-page letter with three items that she was brought up before in the planning mission level, is what she stated, and that is now part of the record as well. The Parks and Rec Department with the State Insurance Reservation Office has also submitted a letter in response to the archaeological studies that have been done in that, in both areas, and just wanted us to be aware of if there's a high potential for archaeological sites. Applicants looking aware of that, I think that we all have been aware of that previously, but it's also in the record. And then Red Rock Biofuels has also worked on the traffic impact analysis at TIA, and it is also part of the record as a proof thing. Their findings previously have addressed this as ODOT had submitted a letter saying that because it was coming off of the county nodding ODOT road, you're staying on the road there, that what was, and I'm not going to go over the whole letter, but there is comments from ODOT previous to this impact analysis, so this is a good supplement to what's already in the record. So is there any other questions for me?
A question would be both letters that we received, one from Craig and one from Sarah Button, or either one of these are similar, brought in through the planning commission time prior to this hearing?
Yeah, they are. Sarah's original comments were given orally, nothing in writing, so this is really a summary of her oral comments, which if we went back to, you know, the actual audio, you would hear a lot of that. And then the Crag Law Group, again, they submitted a pretty in-depth, two-page-plus response to the application originally, and the hearings were continued to give Red Rock time and planning commission's time to respond to those comments. This letter really talks about how it felt that those issues weren't actually responded to in depth, and so you'll see the letter, and hopefully you've all had time to review it. My understanding is that Red Rock will, you know, the people today will just address that letter real quick, in short, but we can.
You believe before the recommendation to forward it on to us, the planning commission have heard these arguments during that process?
Yeah, it doesn't seem to be anything new, in their reason.
The guy on the center, in the letter received on Monday, July 12, on number C, that said unaddressed issue, I mean, have you addressed that?
And Darwin, that's what you were saying, where they feel that through the process wasn't addressed. That's their statement.
That's their statement.
Okay.
You're saying the issues were addressed.
From what, Red Rock, and that's why I'm not going to speak for Red Rock, but certainly they'll respond to this letter as they have yet, so they will. And again, for all in the room, I am part of the town council, but I'm not participating in the decision-making process, so it's important to us to be like.
Now, through the planning commission, all the criterias been met, or?
Yeah, that's what the planning commission found, and has a recommendation, giving to you guys, or the planning commission's recommend for approval, to lead them.
I would like to disclose that as a landowner, not within this exclusion area, I was noticed as a property owner. There's not a conflict there, but I wanted to be noticed that through the process. My wife and I, as OPL law owners, on that end of town, was noticed, we could test out so far, but it's not a conflict, but I wanted to disclose that I was one of the landowners noticed.
I checked his property yesterday, he was outside, he acted out.
I failed to mention that Miss Moore also did get just minor, I would say that there's typos on some of the, one of the maps that's in the record. Craig, if you address that map, it also is going to. Although that, I have no further, because again, I'm afraid of.
Hearing the. Thank you, Darwin.
Thank you.
Commissioner Leonard has a good point. County matter just finished, does anything from this town of Lakeview?
Darwin covered the additional testimony that's being entered into the record, so that should reflect both the county and town record. I'm not sure that the town councilors will have access to some of that material until it's just been mentioned now.
We received a letter from Craig, and just shortly, we received the email.
From Mrs. Button?
So we, I read through it briefly.
And then the traffic impact study and the.
We did not.
And the Chicago letter that.
As far as, there's none, which I'm sure Darwin will go back.
With that done and said, or Red Rock Biofuels? Please stay tonight.
Madam Northern Counsel, I'm Craig Stone. I am a urban planner. My firm is located in Edgewood. We are present today to speak on behalf of Red Rock Biofuels. Our client, I'm on the phone, as you noted earlier, is applicant, or not applicant, Red Rock's attorneys, Seth King, one or two attorneys. I just want to begin by saying we are pleased to be for both bodies standing a long time coming. Mary Din, the project manager for Red Rock, is seated behind me in the audience, and she would be happy to field any questions that follow within her scope of knowledge, which is quite broad on this project. I am present to deal with any technical issues. I wonder if the board and council would like me to recap what we are asking for, if that is a least bit unclear, I'm prepared to do that.
Are you referring to asking for urban growth boundary change?
Yes, but it is really more than that, because once the urban growth boundary is reconfigured by taking in new land and excluding land that's presently in the urban growth boundary, it triggers the need to change comprehensive plan designations for the county on both the land that's coming into the TB and that to be excluded, and those are exclusively county matters. And there's two of those, one that deals with the inclusion parcel, the other with the exclusion. And finally, and this is strictly under the city's purview, would be for the city to apply its own comprehensive plan designation to the property that is being included, and I think that creates a sort of full circle, and puts a bow on it according to the requirements or in law of various regulations that govern urban growth boundary reconfigurations. Those are the steps, and that is where your jurisdiction will authorize. With respect to other issues raised, there really aren't new issues in any of the course of. And there's two of those, one that deals with the inclusion parcel, the other with the exclusion. And finally, and this is strictly under the city's purview, would be for the city to apply its own comprehensive plan designation to the property that is being included. And I think that creates a sort of old circle, and puts a, puts a bow on it according to the requirements or in-law of various regulations that govern urban growth boundary reconfigurations. Those are the steps, and that is where your jurisdiction and authority lies. With respect to rebuttal and issues raised, there really aren't new issues in any of the correspondence other than the letter from Miss Button references a section of the county zoning code that we search for in the county, that it exists. I can't tell you if it's a typographical error or, or exactly what, but that cannot be responded to because that section of the code doesn't exist unless under technical producer, then this case outstanding for record, or you can only find it, nor have Red Rock's attorneys, North, I believe, County Planning Director, Darlene Johnson. There were fifty-five, I believe, separate issues, mostly highly technical nuance, sort of arguments that were made by the Crag Law Firm on behalf of its clients. We sought to address all of them. It was a short time period, I think there were some legal issues that were to be addressed by Red Rock's attorneys that we simply ran out of time for. I can assure you that these are technical, pretty, pretty simple matters, for the most part, to address. And what we would propose is one of two things. We can address those and put them in the record, or if you are comfortable reaching a decision today, we will incorporate those responses into the final findings of fact and conclusions of law that the town and county would both adopt. And I'll leave that to, to your preference. And with respect to how we proceed from here, I guess I need to wait and see what, what evolves here regarding today with respect to the comments, and then I might like to comment on the procedure if you would allow me to do so. And with that, I'll conclude my comments. If you have questions, we'll try to answer them all.
I think he's responded to the, the letters that we've received this morning in regards to Miss Button, and, and also the, the letter from Seth King. The one thing that, that stands out in the, in the documentation that we were given, I don't see anything that was inclusive, as you say, from Miss Button, on what she stated that's in question. So, if it's not existing, I don't guess we need to, to worry on that until it's presented, and it's a little late to be presenting without backing it up at this point, I think.
I do not know. I don't know, the party you sent to the audience, or whether somebody might flesh out what those unfound sections are, so we might respond, and if that occurs today, I'll try to respond today.
Any other parties in support of Red Rock? Mary, do you have?
Do you say yes or no?
Yes, I would say, and what I'd like to make is to thank you, to continue to your project, um, to this process, the continuum, and the new program. Thank you.
Uh, county, have any? Any at this point?
I have none.
Are there any others in support of the Red Rock urban growth boundary change? Are there any of us? Scott, stay tonight.
Morning, commissioners and counselors, I'm Scott Edelman. My coworker is John Jennings in the back, who are with the DLCB. We're not here to support or oppose the project, we're there to support the community, the process, and the planning department. So, Mary, if you have any questions, or if there's any way that we can help.
Is anyone else ready to speak in support or in opposition? Jim Wallace.
Jim Wallace, Lake County Resources Initiative. I think this proposal of speaking on behalf of LCRI, we are in support of it, it's into the industrial park area, and continuing of the industrial area development, we think it's an appropriate move to be making. That's interesting.
Thank you, Jim.
And to put the record, Jim, when you said the proposal, we are talking about the urban growth boundary change. Sorry. I ask, are you ladies in favor of the proposal?
Oh, sir.
If not, then I'll close the vote. Then it's for us to come to a conclusion.
Do we need to move first, Mayor?
Yes, we do.
Or the council, the county?
The town needs to make a motion first, so.
Okay, I would move to accept the Lakeview Town Planning Commission recommendation of the changes to the findings of the fact presented by the planning officials, and direct our counsel, John Bogartis, to prepare an ordinance for adoption.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second to approve the planning commission recommendations, and request attorney to prepare an ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
So, I'd like to move for the board of commissioners, based upon the argument and evidence presented by Red Rock Biofuels LLC and county and town staff on the record for file number fifteen-dash-zero-four-three-dash-CPA-dash-UGV. I find that the applicant satisfied applicable criteria, and I move to pro alternative adoption of the, uh, following amendments. Reconfigure the town Lakeview urban growth boundary to add the sixty-one acres identified as inclusion lands to the UGV, and to remove the fifty-eight acres identified as exclusion lands from the UGV. Two, so, number two, amend the county comprehensive plan to change the designation of the inclusion lands from agriculture to commercial, and the exclusion lands from commercial to agriculture. And number three, amend the county zoning map to change the county zoning of the inclusion lands from agriculture, A-two, to commercial, C-one, and the exclusion lands from commercial, C-one, to agriculture, A-two, as subject to approval by the town, Lakeview, of those portions of the application, subject to the town's jurisdiction, and further subject to the staff returning with an ordinance and findings of fact for our consideration final action at a meeting of August eleventh, two thousand and sixteen. And also would like to, at this time, legal counsel, unless I'm wrong on my motion, have Red Rock, Mr. Craig there, incorporate in the final decision the findings that he brought forward.
I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries on the county part. Anything else?
We will wait.
We'll wait for the, uh, the town. And we're gonna cover that in August eleven.
August eleven, yes. I would move that this continuation of, of a hearing. Your turn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We take the term.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.